Good evening. Welcome to the East Hampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, August 5th, 2020. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast via East Hampton Media on Charter Channel 193 or on East Hampton Media's YouTube channel. Our thanks as always to East Hampton Media for their assistance in broadcasting this meeting. All councilors and participants in this meeting are gathered remotely via Zoom conferencing. Remote public meetings during the COVID-19 pandemic are the result of an executive order by Governor Baker on March 12th, 2020, allowing us to do so. I ask all members of the council and members of the public to remain on mute until recognized by the council president. Also, if you find your internet is slow, it helps sometimes to remove the video portion of the feed and go only with the voice portion. For those of you who are attending this meeting for public speak, please remember that this is your turn to speak, so the council will not be responding to your comments, but we will be listening to them. You will have three minutes. If you would like to speak, use the Raise Your Hand feature by selecting the Participants option at the bottom of your screen, then click Raise Hand at the bottom of the Participants window. If you're dialing in via phone only, you can raise your hand by pressing *9. Please remain on mute until called, at which point you can unmute your own connection. Before speaking, state your name and your street or town, if not in East Hampton. Thank you. This meeting is now called to order. Barbara, could we have the roll call, please?
Peg Coniff?
Here.
Salem Derby?
Present.
Omar Gomez?
Here.
JP Gazinski? JP?
He's here.
He's here.
I don't know what happened to him.
Okay. Bill Lynch? No, Bill. Tom Peak?
Here.
Dan Rist?
Here.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Here.
Owen Zerrit?
Here. Councilor Gazinski was having audio problems earlier. He could speak not here.
Okay. All right. We will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, eternal. Thank you. Could I have a motion for the approval of the minutes from July 15?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Gazinski? Bill's not still here. Tom Peak?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerrit?
Aye.
All right. At this time, we will have public speak. If there's anyone from the public who would like to speak, please go ahead and raise your hand, and I will call your name, and you can go ahead and speak.
I don't see any.
Okay.
Actually, I had my hand up, sorry. It's not acting right.
Okay. All right. Go ahead, Jason.
Just for a point of clarification, sorry. I will cede my time. I think I literally just saw that Councilman Peak's ordinance review is actually on the agenda.
Correct.
And so I believe that there's a portion of time around that issue for the public to make comment.
No, tonight, Dan, I got it. Dan, thanks. Tonight is first reading only, Jason.
Okay.
So we are literally moving it to a committee. So if you'd like to speak on it now?
Yes, I would.
Please go ahead. Absolutely.
Yes, I would. I would just say that I was very, very happy and pleased when Councilperson Peak announced this ordinance review at the event that Aeneas Not Enough held on August 1st at the Rotary. We thank every city councilperson who is in support of this. I believe Councilperson Gomez is also in support of this, and Rothschild is also in support of this. And if I missed anyone, that's on me. That's not on you guys. So just thank you all very, very much. This is the kind of decisive and much-needed action towards unraveling systemic bias and racism in our town, and knowing that it is part of what you guys have agreed to do every 10 years, there's really no reason that this undertaking shouldn't happen. So thank you very much, and with that, I'll cede any time I have.
Thank you. Gabby? Oh, you're on mute. Hang on.
Got it. Sorry. I just wanted to echo Jason's statement and say that I also appreciate this review that Tom Peak has moved forward, and I'm looking forward to the process and to seeing what results from this review. So I just wanted to also express my appreciation for this very actionable next step into making our city a safer, more welcoming, you know, better city for us all. So thank you, and I see the rest of my time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in public speak? I don't see anyone, so we will move on. We do have a public hearing at 6:15, but we have a few minutes before then, so if we want to do some of the communications from elected boards and officials, I know there's a line item here for the Planning Board recommendation. Salem, do you want to speak to that now or during your ordinance report?
I can speak during the report.
Okay. Are there any councilors who have any comments you'd like to make at this time? Go ahead and raise your hand. Councilor Zerrit?
Thank you, President Coniff. I have a prepared statement I want to read. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I wanted to just take a minute to thank Jane Hamel for her service to the Community Relations Committee. This nascent committee progressed exceptionally well in uncharted waters under her role as chair, and the first chair of the committee. Her diverse experience fostered the growth necessary among its members to tackle the very critical issues that lie before it now as we undertake a robust discussion of anti-racist policies and review police policy in our city. Thank you, Jane, for your leadership. Our country was founded on the back of black slaves and the disenfranchisement of indigenous peoples by way of land acquisition. White European landowners took advantage of these populations in the formation of our country when we were predominantly an agriculturally based economy. As industrialization was ushered in, these inequities only continued to widen. It was not until very recently in our country's history that we have sought to undo these inequities and make efforts to undo the privilege of white people and fight against the injustices faced every day by black and indigenous people of color. Every industry in America is guilty in some way of historical racial injustice. Our law enforcement system is certainly no exception to this historical injustice. The current state of law enforcement in America is imperfect, with some communities bearing the weight of this imperfection more than others. Unfortunately, we are seeing national efforts to undo racial bias and to review police policies. We're also fortunate that here in East Hampton, we have a police department that has demonstrated commitment to progressive policies and community-based policing as well, as ongoing openness to discussion and communication. Coffee and Cookout with a Cop, the DOG work group in formation of the CRC, providing an LGBTQ liaison to raise the pride flag, support for the welcoming city audience, most recently supporting the facial recognition ban. We have a community services lieutenant, Lieutenant Scribner, who oversees a variety of liaison officers and who provides interface with the community. The commitment to these events, committees, and local legislation without hesitation demonstrates our police department's willingness to work with our community and to develop safe and progressive policing. The murder of George Floyd started an immediate chain of events within our city that brought about greater visibility of police policies and more changes to those policies. The city signed on to the My Brothers Keeper pledge and adopted policies within the Eight Can't Wait campaign. They have evaluated current policies and have begun making them more accessible and visible on the website. Recognizing the role of CRC, they have sought to participate in the discussions there regarding anti-racist policies and policing in our city. So say it with me together. Black lives matter. The blatant murder of George Floyd and other black people is intolerable. We must safeguard against a system that marginalizes minorities. We need policies in our city that are sweepingly anti-racist, equitable, and non-biased. We're facing a national discussion, but the national discussion does not mean it translates 100% to see what we see within our municipality. Of course, there's always room for evaluation, review, and growth. We have a police department who cares and does great work for our community and has shown dedication to being open to progressive policies and a willingness to listen. We have engaged residents and officials in our city who are passionate about discussion around police policy. I'm sure it's going to be a difficult discussion, but I know that our police department is up to the challenge and more than willing to participate in engaged dialogue. We must be part of the conversation, and they must be part of the conversation, and they show that they will be. It's one of the reasons that makes me proud of our city, great commitment to departments, in this case, the police. Thank you to Chief Alberti for having an open mind and the willingness to engage the public, and for community by work that his department do every day. And thank you to all the engaged residents of East Hampton who have committed to evaluating the policies in our city. It's an opportunity to work together in pursuit of a more equitable future that we can all be proud of. It's time to come together. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilors who would like to make a comment? Council Rothschild? You're on mute.
Hello. I just wanted to comment on the event that was held on Saturday organized by Aeneas Not Enough and Stay Well 413. Just want to say it was an excellent event. I thought it was really well organized. There was a great selection of speakers. There was a great energy. It was peaceful. It was respectful. It asked demands of our city that I think are reasonable and a good way to bring us forward. I welcome this activism. It was great to see the demonstration through the streets, and I just wanted to say that I wanted to thank those groups for the great event. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay. Sorry, Jason. We can't. Yeah, thanks. Dan, did you have anything for Vice President Communication?
Yes, I just wanted to take a moment. During this pandemic, we aren't able to have the kind of ceremony we should have for a man who worked for our city for so many years. His name is George Megler, and he just retired as Parks Foreman and as our tree warden. He supervised and maintained our beautiful Nonna Town Park, and it wouldn't be the way it is today without him. And I just want the city council somehow to acknowledge his service. It's just too bad that we can't have a ceremony in our chambers to do that. He was a great employee for the city, and I just wanted to thank him publicly. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council Rist. I also want to make just a really quick comment also about Saturday. I was not able to attend, but there was a brief time when there was a Facebook Live broadcast, which I think mostly encompassed the speakers who were on the gazebo area. And I thought it was fabulous. I thought that what I heard was really, really good, and I wished I could have seen more of it, but I appreciate everything that was done. It was really well done, and the speakers were great. And I just, like I said, I really wished I could have seen more of it. And actually, Jason, to your point, I 100% support what Tom Peak is putting forth tonight. And I may have just tipped my hand with my vote, but just want to put that out there. Okay. It is now just before 6:15. I will take a motion to open the public hearings.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to open public hearings. They are so open. Is this Councilor Zerrit? Go ahead. Is this your public hearing? It is whose public hearing? You're on mute.
Yeah. No, it is us. Thank you, actually. I'm not used to... Let me just pull up that property agenda again. Yes, so the... Sorry. There is a request by Eversource to... And I'm just looking for the item. Sorry, I had it up before we were doing property. There is a request by Eversource to relocate a pole near to the location of Main Street and True Heart Drive. There is a rotted tree, which apparently is involved with the pole that is currently there right now, and they are requesting relocation and installation of the appropriate guy wires. We just met at 5 o'clock with the Property Committee, and there were essentially no questions from the members of the committee. Nick Kriegel, a representative of Eversource, did appear for that meeting and gave us some brief explanation. There were no concerns. This is basically kind of boilerplate work that Eversource does all the time in response to issues around utility poles. The committee met. We voted 3-0 in approval of this to move to the full council. I really don't have much more to contribute in regards to this discussion other than trying to pull up the information I had in front of me before.
And maybe you said this. Eversource clearly was not able to make it tonight because of the issues from yesterday. So if anyone on the council has any specific questions that Councilor Zerrit cannot answer, we'd be happy to continue the public hearing, but I tend to think we may not need to. Do you have it, Councilor Zerrit?
I don't. Let me... Can you give me one second? I'll pull it up. I don't know why it closed.
It is right on the agenda, too. Well, you can use it as a motion.
Okay. I'll use that, then. Thank you.
Are there any questions from any of the councilors regarding this utility pole? Seeing none, why don't you go ahead and make a motion, Councilor Zerrit?
Thank you, President Coniff. I'd like to make a motion regarding the utility pole location. The motion is requesting Eversource of Verizon, New England, they are requesting permission to install one jointly owned stub pole and sideways guy to be located approximately 30 feet southerly of the center line of Main Street and approximately 210 feet easterly of the True Heart Drive. The reason for this is to replace a rotten tree on Main Street. So I'd like to make a motion for the location of that pole, 30 feet southerly in the main line of Main Street and approximately 210 feet easterly of True Heart Drive's center line.
For so one second. If anyone from the public, I'm sorry, President Coniff, anyone from the public, they have any question or comment about this?
I will therefore...
Second.
... motion.
Motion in a second to approve the pole location for Eversource. Barbara, any further discussion? Barbara?
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Yes.
Omar Gomez?
Yes.
JP Gazinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerrit?
Aye.
Motion passes 8 to 0.
All right. I will take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to close the public hearing. Public hearings are now closed.
You really should take a vote on that, Peg.
Oh, you should. We should. Wow. I think I am, like, really off my game tonight. Go ahead, Barbara.
Okay. Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Yeah.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Gazinski? Tom? Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan? Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerrit?
Aye.
Motion passes. Public hearings are now closed. The mayor is not here, from what I can tell, so we will skip mayor communications.
She is.
Oh, there she is. I apologize. I didn't see you. My apologies, Madam Mayor. Please.
I was following directions. I muted myself, and I turned my video off. I have nothing for mayor communications.
Wow, this is a rough night. Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Reports of standing committees. Finance, Council Rist?
Council Zerrit has a question first.
Councilor Zerrit?
Can we ask questions of the mayor?
Sure. Mayor?
Got it.
Yes.
I'll send an email. Don't worry about it. I'll just send an email.
Should I just, like, give... Should I just put the hosting of this over on somebody else? Because clearly, I am unqualified this evening. Wow. Okay.
You're doing a fine job, then.
Not really. Okay. Council Rist, Finance?
Yes. The Finance Committee will meet next week, August 12th, to deal with stipends, which we haven't dealt with yet. I intend to send out some information to the committee, as well as the full council, as well as the three new items which I'm about to move from New Business. First of all, I have New Business, which I requested, which was to review the end of year, end of fiscal year reports. I made this so that people could ask questions, and because of open meeting law, it ought to be on an agenda. I have also feel, as in consultation with the mayor, that this ought to be a permanent agenda item without termination date. By means that I will make a motion to make monthly reports constant on the Finance Committee agenda, so that whenever a report is submitted by the auditor and the treasurer, we can review it at that time, which means that it's not an agenda item that will have a 90-day termination. It's just a continuing item. So I will make a motion for both of those. I move to forward the request to review the end of fiscal year 2020 fiscal reports to the Finance Committee and to establish a continuing agenda item without termination, which shall review monthly fiscal reports as reported by the city auditor.
Second.
Motion in a second to review the end of year fiscal reports and create a standing agenda item for same. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Gazinski?
JP.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerrit?
Aye.
Motion passes 8 to 0.
I will also make for first reading two new business items from the Community Preservation Committee. The first is a request for the following appropriation, $500,000 to be appropriated from the CPA Reserve for Historic Preservation, $300,000, and the CPA Undesignated Fund Balance, $200,000, for a total of $500,000 to be appropriated to the Old Town Hall Second Floor Construction Retained City Match, $500,000, for the following purpose, in order to add funds previously earmarked to the savings account for holding city-committed matching construction funds for the second floor restoration and new accessible entrance and elevator project at Old Town Hall. Secondly, I have a supplemental appropriation from the Community Preservation Committee for $9,900 to be appropriated from the CPA Reserve for Historic Preservation, $9,900, to be appropriated to the City Archival Records Management Survey, $9,900. The amount's requested for the following purpose, for contracting with professional records and analysts to survey and analyze archived city records. I move that these two aforementioned items be sent to the Finance Committee for review.
Second.
Motion is second to move some supplemental appropriations from CPA to the Finance Committee. Any further discussion? Barbara?
I'll start with Salem. Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Gazinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerrit?
Aye.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Motion passes 8 to 0.
I would also like to make a motion...
8 to 0.
I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion for the last two aforementioned items to be set for public hearing for the first meeting in September, September 2nd, at 6:15. I need a second.
Second.
Motion is second to set a public hearing at September 2nd?
That's right.
6:15. Okay. All those in... Any further discussion? All those in favor? Barbara?
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Gazinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerrit?
Aye.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerrit?
Aye.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Gazinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerrit?
Aye.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerrit?
Aye.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Madam President, that concludes Finance.
It's... Barbara, before we let Council Rist go, do we need to do a motion for the warrant for the election?
Yes. If you could just vote to approve and sign it.
Okay. Dan, could you make the motion on the election warrant, please?
I have to find it, or do I?
Well, anyone could make the motion on the election warrant?
I just think a motion to accept the election warrant is submitted by the clerk, the city clerk.
Second.
Motion is second to accept the election warrant for the September 1st state primary. Any further discussion? Barbara?
JP Gazinski?
JP.
Tom Peak?
I'm...
He said aye. JP said aye.
Okay. Tom?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerrit?
Aye.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Gazinski?
Aye.
Tom? Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Public safety, Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, Madam President. We had a meeting in July 23rd, uh, last night meeting we had to cancel, uh, because the storm that, uh, by the way, I saw that storm twice, uh, I want to start, uh...
Off the east coast, weren't you?
Yeah. I want to start, uh, with pedestrian safety review on the resident speeding concerns. Uh, both BPW and the planning department and especially their, their resident speeding concern and the police department are working with it. Um, the committee decided to remove it without prejudice. We vote three to zero to approve, uh, to remove it. Uh, the reason is because that, the BPW have a plan, uh, and, and the planning department is, one of the sample is for the past few, uh, weeks, if you go around the town, you can see the, the sidewalks, uh, they paint the sidewalks and, and, and doing a really good job with that. Same with, uh, with the planning department now with the, uh, to make a new crosswalk in, in Williston Avenue. So, um, I want to make a motion to remove the pedestrian safety review and the residents' speeding concerns, uh, without prejudice.
Second.
Motion is second to remove the pedestrian safety review from the agenda for public safety without prejudice. Any further discussion? I actually have a question, Counselor Gomez. Um, when you say that the planning board and the BPW have kind of a plan and they're executing pieces of the plan for this, do they, is there, will there be a published plan or is it, they're just kind of taking care of specific things that come along or will they publish something?
They are taking care of specific things in the city, like, uh, like especially like a Williston Avenue now with the new crosswalks and the, on the bike, uh, the bike path that they want to, they want to, uh, do there. BPW is painting all the crosswalks in, in our city. So they're going, uh, step by step, they don't have any, they don't have a plan per se. Um, I, I, I commit to the, to my committee that are going to be part of the BPW meetings to keep pushing them and pushing, uh, DPW to keep working for the safety of our community. And I'm going to keep working really hard with Jeff, uh, the planning, uh, the city planner, to keep improving the, our safety of the pedestrians.
Okay, great, thank you, Counselor Gomez. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Gazinski.
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.
All right.
About the, uh, request to review the on-street parking restriction and traffic rules and order, we're still working on it. Uh, the committee decide that we're going to send an email and letters to the business owners in, uh, in Main Street, Union Street, and Cottage Street because we want to do something, uh, we want to do something consist, consistency in the parking signs, but we want to have the input of the business owners. Uh, we already, I already have a discussion with, uh, with the chief of emergency too. Uh, the plan that we have, we try to make something consistency in all street, especially where we have a lot of businesses and, uh, makes sense to have something for the police department and the residents and the visitors of East Hampton to have something like that. Uh, we're going to stay working on it. Uh, and the last thing that we have is the Williston Avenue pedestrian and bicycle improvement. Uh, we sent, I mean, when I would say we is, uh, the city planner sent a letter to the neighbors, uh, because yesterday we have to cancel the meeting, we, we're going to have another meeting in August 17th and 6:00 PM, and I expecting the neighbors to be part of it so that we can have a discussion about, uh, about this new project. Uh, I invite the other counselors to be part of it. If you guys have any question, please, uh, be part of the meeting. It's going to be August 17th at 6:00 PM, and that conclude.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. Uh, appointment is Counselor Lynch, I assume that's you, Counselor Gomez, tonight?
Thank you, Madam President again. I want to start with the first appointment. I prefer to someone else to make the motion because I have a conflict of interest because Cindy Mohica and that woman live with me. So, uh, if anyone please can do that, uh, for me, I will be, uh, I'm going to appreciate it.
So could someone make the motion to move Cindy Mohica to the, uh, appointment?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Uh, motion is second to, to forward Cindy Mohica's, uh, appointment to the East Hampton City Arts to the appointment subcommittee. Barbara?
Do you want to do both appointments or are you going to do them one by one?
Well, you, do you care, Omar, if we include Kathy Gray in this or did you want to do Kathy? Well, he can vote on Kathy Gray, he can vote on Cindy.
But I want to do Cindy first because I have to abstain.
Right, and yeah, he can, right, go ahead, Barbara.
Um, let's see, um, Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
It's, uh, Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Gazinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Uh, Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Looks like that one passed seven to zero. Okay?
Thank you. Uh, so the ordinance committee met twice last week. On Tuesday, we had a joint public hearing with the planning board where we discussed two items, um, and on Thursday, we, uh, discussed the city attorney's review of the, um, proposed plastic ordinance. Uh, so just a quick update, um, we did get a, uh, recommendation from the planning board on the, uh, downtown business permitting, uh, I guess it would be speeding things up a little bit, cutting some of the red tape, uh, and we do have a public hearing for that at our next meeting on the 19th. Um, and the other item, which is talking about cannabis and highway business, we continued, uh, we are going to meet with the planning board again on the 18th. Uh, and, and so, uh, before our next meeting, the day before the Tuesday, we're going to have another joint public hearing with the planning board, if anybody wants to attend. Um, as far as plastics, the, uh, the update on that is we're right at the, at the finish line. Uh, we have, at our meeting, we, we, uh, discussed, uh, basically a sentence that would just give a little bit more enforcement, um, that we just want the city attorney to, to look over that sentence and make sure that that's going to be okay. Um, but we're, we're right there and as soon as we get that kind of okay from the city attorney, I'll set the public hearing for that. Uh, uh, we are not going to meet next week, but like I said, we are going to meet on the 18th with the planning board.
So you, you also mentioned Counselor Derby, you're going to meet on 8/19 for the ordinance committee?
That's, ordinance, so that's our city council special meeting and we have the public hearing for, um, the recommendation that we just got from the planning board.
All right, so you're not having a meeting before city council?
Nope.
Got it.
Uh, thus concludes.
And just to clarify, I'm sorry, Counselor Derby, the, I just want to make sure since it's on the agenda and just that we talk about it, so the planning board recommendation, that is already set for a public hearing on August 19th, and that's more or less what we just said. So that item that is under communications from elected officials, we're big with that. Okay?
Yep, it looks like Owen has something.
Yeah, Counselor Zaret? You're mute.
I think I answered my question, just looking at the agenda. We have a public hearing scheduled for the plastics?
Yes. Oh, no, not yet, no.
No, you do not.
I, I, I was going to wait to set the public hearing until we got the, the final attorney review.
Okay, I'm sorry, Chairman Derby, I just, just...
No worries.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Derby. Property, Counselor Zaret?
Yeah, I'm mute.
I know, just navigating technology, looking, I'm changing between screens. Uh, thank you, President Coniff. Uh, uh, looking at our agenda, we just resolved the pole location on Main Street near True Heart Drive with our earlier public hearing. Um, there, the planning board has not yet discussed the discontinuance of Standis Street. Um, that was referred to them and they will, they have promised that they will discuss at their next meeting. It's basically a recommendation, my understanding is there should not be significant deliberation, but as we discussed last time, there is the formality of the planning board, so, um, uh, reviewing, reviewing that item. And so I'm assuming that they will be able, hopefully, send that back to us prior to our next meeting and we will be able to vote on it. Uh, my understanding, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, but we do not need to set a public hearing for that, correct?
I don't think so. For the discontinuance of Standis Street, is that the one you're talking about? No, I don't think so, no.
And I also don't think, other than leaving it on the agenda, we don't take, need to take any further action, it will remain on the agenda, uh, pending a referral, uh, back from the planning board and then hopefully we can vote on the August 19th meeting. Uh, regarding the dog park, um, I do not anticipate the Parks Commission meeting anytime soon, I think the clock's kind of run out on that. Uh, I'd like to obviously leave it on the agenda, um, but I would like first, uh, prior to anything, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to remove the public hearing that was previously scheduled for, uh, September, I have to look at what that date is in September, I think it's the 2nd.
Yes.
Second.
Motion is second to, uh, remove the public hearing scheduled for September 2nd for the, uh, dog park. Any further discussion? Barbara, oh, Counselor Zaret?
Just to clarify too, this was, this was discussed earlier at the property meeting, I think we were all in agreement that we just don't have the necessary information to move forward on the project right now. It's certainly something, uh, we'd like to discuss, but there's better, bigger priorities in the city and we'll continually leave it on our agenda, um, but, um, we don't have the information we need from the Parks Commission at this time.
Okay. Any, any further discussion? Barbara?
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Gazinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Motion to, remove the public hearing, pass eight to zero.
And then also in the form of a motion, and I would like to, I'd like to make a motion, uh, to, uh, request a 90-day extension on that same agenda item.
Second.
Motion and a second to extend the time on the municipal dog park by 90 days. Any discussion? Barbara?
Salem Derby.
Yes.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Gazinski.
Yes.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Uh, it does not appear that we have any new business, so thus concludes.
Thank you, Counselor Zaret. Counselor Zaret, while I have you, um, do you want to, do you want to go ahead right now and do the, uh, resolution that you have and, and kind of get that out of the way before we move into the remaining city?
Oh, I'm certainly happy to, President Coniff, if it pleases the council and yourself.
It pleases me, therefore it pleases the council. Go ahead.
Uh, okay, thank you. Um, let me just pull up my information on that. Uh, so as you are all aware, um, I believe it was last September, uh, thank you to Counselor Rist, uh, we passed a resolution calling for US to join the treaty on prohibition of nuclear weapons, and it called on, uh, a series of points, uh, renouncing the option of first using nuclear, of using nuclear weapons first, ending the president's role in unchecked authority, taking US nuclear weapons off the hair trigger alert, canceling the plan to replace the arsenal with enhanced weapons and leading global effort to reduce tensions, particularly with Russia through dialogue. Um, I was approached by a local, uh, Western Mass physician, Dr. Ira Healthend, who has, um, many, many accolades in regards to his work, uh, anti-nuclear work. Um, he's a member of the International Steering Group of ICAN, uh, who, that group won the 2017 Nobel Peace Prize, he's the co-president of International Physicians for the Prevention of Nuclear War and the recipient of the 1985 Nobel Peace Prize, uh, and also co-founder, past president of Physicians for Social Responsibility. Um, he is involved with, um, and sorry, I'm kind of jumping around, I just want to make sure that I'm, uh, he's involved with Back From The Brink, which is a call to prevent nuclear war. Uh, their website's actually being updated, but preventnuclearwar.org, uh, is the website, and they have a, um, uh, resolution, a municipal resolution, uh, that has similar, five similar points, uh, those being, again, renouncing the option of using nuclear weapons first, ending sole unchecked authority of any president to launch a nuclear attack, ticking the US nuclear weapons off air trigger alert, canceling, uh, the plans to, uh, replace the nuclear arsenal with enhanced weapons and actively pursuing, uh, verifiable agreement among nuclear armed states to eliminate their arsenals. Uh, Dr. Healthend also, uh, wrote a letter to the city council, which is, um, in the packet, um, and as we, uh, approach, I think it is, it's tomorrow or very soon is the anniversary, and I, I'm not quite sure if I like that term, but the memorial of the bombing of Hiroshima and Nagasaki. Um, these are, uh, weapons that frankly should never be used and, uh, are ones of terrible, terrible destruction. Uh, and, uh, I'm asking the city council to sign on to essentially a new resolution which, uh, embodies the spirit of the one that we passed last year, um, but with some slight different wording, um, and, um, with the council's permission, um, if, if it pleases them, I'd like to, based on our, our prior actions, essentially reaffirm our commitment and, uh, pass this on first reading.
So could you make a motion, please, to that effect and then we will, if anyone objects, then we'll take our next action.
Absolutely, uh, President Coniff. Um, I would like to make a motion, uh, on first reading to accept, uh, the city of East Hampton's, uh, call to prevent nuclear war resolution.
Second.
Motion and a second to, on first reading, take action on the resolution for preventing nuclear war. Any further discussion? Counselor Rist?
Just want to, um, say that I have, I have no problem with doing this in one, uh, sitting. The resolution does not match last year's, in that last year's resolution asked for local, uh, anti-manufacturing points and also divestment of, uh, certain defense, uh, contractors, et cetera. And we met and removed those items because we didn't know how they would affect our, for instance, our retirement board, uh, investments and things. So this does not have, uh, any, uh, local direct action as much as national action and is certainly worth doing. So I have no objection to it because there doesn't seem to be any points in there that need discussion on the local level.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, so again, the motion and the second is to, uh, take action on this on first reading. Barbara?
Uh, Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Gazinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Motion passes to go ahead and take action on this on first reading. Counselor Zaret?
Thank you, I will now read the resolution. Um, city of East Hampton's call to prevent nuclear war resolution, whereas nine nations collectively have approximately 14,500 nuclear weapons in their arsenals, most of which are far more destructive than those that killed hundreds of thousands of people in Hiroshima and Nagasaki, Japan, in 45. Whereas the detonation of even a small number of these weapons could have catastrophic human environmental consequences that could affect everyone on the planet. Whereas the United States maintains several, several hundred nuclear missiles in underground silos on hair trigger alert, capable of being launched within minutes after a presidential order, which greatly increases the risk of an accidental mistaken or unauthorized launch. Whereas the United States continues to reserve the right to use nuclear weapons first, which reduces the threshold for nuclear use and makes nuclear war more likely. Whereas the US president has the sole unchecked authority to order the use of nuclear weapons. Whereas over the next 30 years, the United States plans to spend estimated $1.7 trillion to replace its entire nuclear arsenal and the bombers, missiles, and submarines that deliver them with more capable, more usable versions. Whereas taxpayers spend over $2 million every hour of every day to maintain the US nuclear arsenal. Whereas a new grassroots movement called Back From The Brink, the call to prevent nuclear war, has been endorsed by 250 health, environmental, academic, peace, faith, and justice organizations, and has resulted in resolutions approved by 32 municipalities, including the cities of Los Angeles, Baltimore, Salt Lake City, and Washington DC with more under consideration. Whereas the United States, as well as Britain, China, France, and Russia are obligated under the Nuclear Nonproliferation Treaty, NPT, to take concrete steps towards eliminating their nuclear arsenals. Whereas in July 17th, uh, of July 2017, 122 nations approved the treaty on the prohibition of nuclear weapons, which upon entry into force, will make it illegal under international law to develop, test, produce, manufacture, or otherwise acquire, possess, or stockpile nuclear weapons or other nuclear explosive devices. We, the city council of East Hampton, Massachusetts, therefore to call upon the United States to lead a global effort to prevent nuclear war by renouncing the option of using nuclear weapons first, ending the sole...
And we met and removed those items because we didn't know how they would affect our, for instance, our retirement board investments and things. So this does not have any local direct action as much as national action and is certainly worth doing. So I have no objection to it because there doesn't seem to be any points in there that need discussion on the local level.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, so again, the motion and the second is to take action on this on first reading. Barbara?
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerret?
Aye.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Motion passes to go ahead and take action on this on first reading. Councillor Zerret?
Thank you. I will now read the resolution. City of East Hampton's call to prevent nuclear war resolution. Whereas nine nations collectively have approximately 14,500 nuclear weapons in their arsenals, most of which are far more destructive than those that killed hundreds of thousands of people in Hiroshima and Nagasaki, Japan, in 1945. Whereas the detonation of even a small number of these weapons could have catastrophic human environmental consequences that could affect everyone on the planet. Whereas the United States maintains several, several hundred nuclear missiles in underground silos on hair-trigger alert, capable of being launched within minutes after a presidential order, which greatly increases the risk of an accidental, mistaken, or unauthorized launch. Whereas the United States continues to reserve the right to use nuclear weapons first, which reduces the threshold for nuclear use and makes nuclear war more likely. Whereas the US president has the sole unchecked authority to order the use of nuclear weapons. Whereas over the next 30 years, the United States plans to spend estimated $1.7 trillion to replace its entire nuclear arsenal and the bombers, missiles, and submarines that deliver them with more capable, more usable versions. Whereas taxpayers spend over $2 million every hour of every day to maintain the US nuclear arsenal. Whereas a new grassroots movement called Back From The Brink, the call to prevent nuclear war, has been endorsed by 250 health, environmental, academic, peace, faith, and justice organizations, and has resulted in resolutions approved by 32 municipalities, including the cities of Los Angeles, Baltimore, Salt Lake City, and Washington DC, with more under consideration. Whereas the United States, as well as Britain, China, France, and Russia, are obligated under the Nuclear Nonproliferation Treaty, NPT, to take concrete steps towards eliminating their nuclear arsenals. Whereas in July 17th, July 2017, 122 nations approved the Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons, which upon entry into force will make it illegal under international law to develop, test, produce, manufacture, or otherwise acquire, possess, or stockpile nuclear weapons or other nuclear explosive devices. We, the City Council of East Hampton, Massachusetts, therefore to call upon the United States to lead a global effort to prevent nuclear war by: renouncing the option of using nuclear weapons first, ending the sole unchecked authority of any president to launch a nuclear attack, taking US nuclear weapons off hair-trigger alert, canceling the plan to replace its entire arsenal with enhanced weapons, and actively pursuing verifiable agreement among nuclear armed states to eliminate their nuclear arsenals. We further, we're further resolved to call on our mayor to affirm the resolution passed by US council and mayors on June 12, 2018, calling on the administration and Congress to step back from the brink and exercise global leadership in preventing nuclear war, to sign on to the pledge on PreventNuclearWar.org, and be it further resolved that we call on the United States to embrace the Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to State Representative Daniel Carey, State Senator John Velas, US Representative Richard Neal, US Senators Elizabeth Warren and Edward Markey, and President Donald J. Trump. Sign this day, August 5, 2020.
Is that in the form of a motion to accept that resolution?
I hereby make a motion to accept the resolution I just read, President Coniff. Thank you.
Second.
Motion is second to accept the resolution called to prevent nuclear war. Any further discussion? Okay, Barbara?
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerret?
Aye.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.
President Coniff?
Councillor Zerret?
May I assume with the passage of the resolution, and thank you, everyone, for agreeing, that we can list ourselves as a council as endorsing Back From The Brink on their website?
Yes, and I'm going to guess that, Barbara, will we be getting something, it doesn't matter, we passed it tonight, so we won't, will we get the signatory, the doc you signed tomorrow?
It'll go out tonight.
That's what I figured, yep.
Thank you.
You may, Councillor Zerret.
Thank you. I guess thus concludes.
Great. Do you have another, and maybe you said this, do you have another property meeting coming up?
Oh, I'm sorry. I, TBD.
Okay, all right. Fair enough. Thank you, Councillor Zerret.
Thank you.
Rules and Government Relations. Councillor Peak?
Thank you, Madam President. We have a couple things tonight. Let's start with a, one that is a little bit overdue, which is your proposal for a Rule 11L. I have the language, there's currently no Rule 11L, this is a new rule, and the, the language of the rule is pretty simple. It reads, "Final and approved minutes on all committee meetings shall be sent to the city clerk for public availability within three meetings from the date of, from that, so three meetings from the date of that meeting for which the minutes are documented." So basically it just says, "Don't get more than three meetings behind on your minutes." Councillor Coniff, would you like to say anything further on that?
Sure. I mean, the, my rationale for putting this forward was really just my noticing on the city website that we have been woefully behind in getting our minutes out. And minutes are a way for the public to know what has transpired in our meetings, where not everyone has the ability to watch the meeting. Some people prefer to have minutes. And there was some seriously bad activity last year in terms of lagging of getting those minutes out. And so in my review of the open meeting rules that the Attorney General has, they have some standards. We're not entirely adhering to all of their standards, but we are certainly tightening it up with this. And essentially the message is, minutes matter, and we'd like to see you get those out within three meetings of whenever you're, you've done the meeting, minutes. In some case, that still may be too long, because you may not meet with any great regularity, but it's a good place to start, I think, and it will certainly improve where we were last year. Councillor Rothschild?
You're on mute, Lynn. I don't think that's unreasonable. I mean, I'm actually guilty right now of falling behind the minutes, but I do want to say to my fellow councillors that we need to spread the responsibility. I know I'm the chair of two, I mean, the, the, not the chair, the clerk of two committees, and, you know, I've had a fellow councillor just refuse to be a clerk in any committee, and I don't think that's fair. I don't think it's collegial. So I look to my fellow councillors, and if you are not stepping up to clerk, and you don't want to share the responsibility, maybe consider not running next time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor, Councillor Zerret?
First of all, President Coniff, I want to thank you for bringing this forward. I know that I had some disagreements with the original language, but I never disagreed with the spirit of this, and I'm very satisfied with what the Rules Committee has come up with. I completely agree with this, in the interest of visibility and transparency in our government, as you said, hashtag minutes do matter. And I want to, I want to also support what Councillor Rothschild just said, that, you know, ultimately, we're all kind of in this together, and there's, clerking on a committee is potentially one of the most important roles of that committee, because it distributes the information in those meetings to the public, and there's always opportunities to help carry the load, to sub in when someone's either not available or just has a lot of things on their plate. So thank you to all the people who clerk out there and make sure that our city is seeing the work we're doing. And thank you again, President Coniff.
Thank you. Councillor Gomez?
Thank you, Madam President. I second what Councillor Rothschild said. I agree 100% with her. I just have one, I just want to be clarified about this. This is not just about the council, it's about all the committees in our city, right?
This would be a city council.
Just the city council. Because if you go to the other committees in the city, park and reg, school committee, it's really hard to find their agenda, too. Just.
Yeah, my comment to that, Omar, is, and we probably do need to do a refresher on open meeting law, because all of our meetings are public and open, and if that, if they, and therefore they fall under open meeting, and there are guidelines within the open meeting that minutes have to be timely and complete. They don't have to be transcriptions, but they do have to exist. So I will take ownership of making sure that we get some communication out to the other boards, that they also need to adhere to the open meeting rule of minutes. So thank you for bringing that up. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councillor Rist?
I just want to also echo Councillor Rothschild. I agree with her. I want to make sure everybody realizes, for all the years I've been on the council, the advent of video recording has assisted us a great deal, in that you don't have to worry about not participating at a meeting because you're busy writing notes about the meeting because you're the clerk. You can watch the video and get, get your own minutes done that way. So it used to be that I, I'd hate to be the clerk, because then I couldn't, I would forget to say something or be too busy, but that's not the case anymore. And secondly, what Councillor Coniff just said is important. I used to transcribe a meeting. The main thing you have to do is write a little bit about the discussion, but make sure you have any votes or motions in the minutes. They don't have to be big thesis writing. And I think if everybody just was a little more brief, they would find it not too taxing to get the minutes done. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Rist. Any other further comments? Okay, back to you, Tom Peak.
Well, as a previous offender in the issue that we are talking about right now, I would like to, I'll make a motion to accept this new Rule 11L.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second to accept new council Rule 11L filing of committee minutes. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Okay, first thing, Tom, I don't have that wording, so can you please email it to me, because I do not have the final wording.
Yep, I'll email it to you literally right now, as we go.
Okay, perfect. Okay, I'll start with you, Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerret?
Aye.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Yes.
Is that it? Oh, motion passes eight to zero. Tom Peak?
Oh, great. Okay, so where are we? Yeah, the next thing that I have, we haven't discussed yet, the pilot program. I know the initial idea was the, in the committee, excuse me, Councillor Rist had thought that this was something that we should probably wait until after quarantine, but that was when quarantine was going to be a few weeks. So at our next meeting, I would like to chat briefly about what we want to do going forward, given that I don't think we're going to be meeting face-to-face till sometime in 2021, but we don't need to do that here. Charter review, we discussed last week. We are pretty much good. The only thing is that the mayor was not able to attend, and there were a few places where we just wanted to bounce a few things off the mayor. So we're going to meet once more about that and just approve all the final language. Once again, you know, it's that, working through that document and all of those changes is going to be a real thing. So even if you can't make it, just watching the recordings of those meetings, if you, you know, are trying to find something to, you know, fall asleep to or whatever, might be advisable, because it's, there's a lot there, and it probably would be helpful to be caught up on that. So, but also, because we're not probably going to meet, well, it's currently scheduled to expire at the 13th, and we're not going to be done by then, I would like to request for a 30-day extension of that.
Just for clarification, Councillor Peak, we have two line items on the agenda. One is a charter review committee discussion that is expiring 8/13. Then there's the charter review draft document discussion, which expires 9/3. Which one are you extending? The committee one?
Well, the committee one, we haven't really actually gotten to, because we've been working the draft. So, yeah, let's extend that for 30 days, and then...
You sure? 30, maybe 90?
Yeah, sure. Let's do 90.
Okay. All right, so we'll extend that one. Go ahead. We need a second.
I believe.
Second.
Okay. Motion is second to extend the charter review committee discussion 90 days. Any discussion? Barbara?
Dan, Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerret?
Aye.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Motion passes. Go ahead.
Okay. Similarly, we haven't gotten to this other stuff. So then, I think we have some new items to introduce to the agenda. We've got an adminis, do these administrative codes, these usually go to rules, right? Or is this going, yeah, okay. So we've got an administrative rule concerning the cultural council?
Yeah, I wanted to ask about that. We actually discussed this earlier this year, and I thought we had made the decision to reduce the number of members and change the name, but we didn't vote on it? It was just something we discussed in committee?
That was the, that was the ECA.
Oh, different. Okay, my bad.
It's what's now called the Grants Committee, and they want to go back to Cultural Council and so.
Okay, my bad.
So I would make a motion to move that item to the Rules and Government Relations Committee.
Second.
Motion second to move the Administrative Code 20-20, 20-2, to the Rules and Government Relations Committee. Any discussion?
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerret?
Aye.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Dan?
Dan?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. And finally, I had an item that I submitted along with Councillors Derby and Gomez about discussing an ordinance review committee. I'll just speak very briefly to that, and, because we're just going to move it tonight, but for the benefit of anyone who might be interested in discussing this in, in committee, I've gotten a lot of emails and other communications, including some actual letters, which is rare, from members of the community, sort of challenging us to talk about what we can do to fight systemic bias and structural racism in our community. And like a lot of you, I sort of struggled to think of things that are actually sort of meaningful and actionable that we, as a council, can specifically do. I had a moment of clarity on this, maybe, where somebody had brought up, you know, somebody was, I was involved in a conversation, people were talking about police training, and what they brought up is that you can have police who are very well-trained, who are excellent people, but if the laws that they are enforcing are inherently unjust, then you still have a problem. And that struck me to say, well, is there anything in our local laws that maybe we need to be taking a look at? Well, our charter says that every 10 years we should be doing one of these ordinance reviews. Side note, we've been talking about in the, going forward, calling for that review to happen on years ending with five, so that it doesn't conflict with charter, but all the same. Given everything that's going on right now, what I really am, am hoping we can do is to form a committee to take a look at our local laws, and see if there's anything in there that is treating some of our citizens differently than others. And my other hope is that we can make this committee, either through its membership or through other people that we bring on, to help us, have, have some people who either through their training or their own lived experience might have some different perspective on this stuff. Because to be honest, if there's anything in there, it's probably, you know, there's a pretty good chance it's going to go over my head as someone with no real experience with these issues. So that's my hope, and if in the, in the meantime, if we don't find anything, then great, you know? If we find some things that have nothing to do with racism, but are just inefficient and need to be taken out, awesome. But I think that, that specifically when we're thinking about the scope and the membership of this committee, trying to get something that's actually well attuned to dealing with the issue that we are facing right now, is, I think that that's a step that we can actually take as a council, and, and sort of see where it goes from there. So that, yeah, that's basically what I have. Does anyone have any questions before I make a motion? Okay. Well, in that case, I will make a motion to move the request to consider establishment of an ordinance review committee to the Rules and Government Relations Committee.
Second.
Motion and a second to move the request to consider establishment of an ordinance review committee to the Rules and Government Relations Committee. Any further discussion? Councillor Rist?
I just want to commend the councillors for putting this forward. A little history, this has never been done, and that's because the word "may" appears in the current charter. That gives the council leeway not to do the work. And it's massive work, because not only are we going to investigate for racism, there are massive amounts of ordinances that may go back many years, which no longer are current. And I'm glad we're doing this. It may take a long time. I guess you're going to review for racism first, which I think is what you should do, but I encourage you to look at all of the old bylaws and see what's there that's not, not current. This should have been done, and I am mad at myself for not pushing for it earlier in my career on the council, but I'm very happy to see that we're going to try and do this now, and look at all of our ordinances, because there may be some in there that, for instance... instance, I've heard give businesses a disadvantage in trying to get their permits ready to go, or things like that, and I'm hoping Counselor Derby would be on this committee, because he's very knowledgeable about our ordinances, so, that's my feel, I, I'm very happy we're trying to do this now.
I also want to make a comment, um, that, you know, part of what Rules and Government Relations is gonna spend the, the early part discussing is what that committee, who's gonna have a big job ahead of them, will look like. What it will be ma, who will make it up, and how many to have, and to Tom's, uh, Counselor Peak's point, what exactly they will bring in terms of, uh, expertise and lived experiences that perhaps the rest of us don't have. And I think that's gonna be really critical, so I, I think that's gonna be, one of the more difficult aspects of this, is seating the committee to make sure that we have the right folks to go through this, because, um, the work is gonna be hard, but I really think we need the right people at the table, so, um, so I, I applaud you, Counselor Peak, for bringing this forward, I think. I remember when you told me this, uh, about a month ago, I pretty much was like, oh my God, this is perfect! So, thank you for doing that, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Zerrit?
Yeah, I just wanted to, to thank you as well. I think that, um, you know, over our brief tenure in city council, we've had a lot of discussions about, um, some of these antiquated ordinances, or ones people just haven't looked at for a long time. Certainly, there's been discussion over the years, you know, most recently with cannabis, about trying to make our ordinances more equitable, um, and certainly, uh, with heightened, even more heightened awareness now of systemic racism in our country and inequity, uh, this is gonna be a, a great move forward, hopefully for the city, so thanks.
Thank you. Um, I just want to say one more thing about this before we vote, which is that if it passes, which from the sound of you guys, I think it probably will, um, I, in terms of my council colleagues, anyone watching, um, you know, anyone who might watch later, please, like, tell people about this, because the last thing, you know, like, I, I'm just, I really want to be honest about the fact that I don't have personally all the perspective that's necessary to do, like, this work right. And, um, and, and that, as fantastic as you guys are, something like that, I'm not alone in that respect, so, I, I want to hear from people who have done a lot of work about anti-racism, who have done work in, in, sort of, local bylaws, uh, really, anything about this subject, who has thoughts about who should be on the committee, what specific things the committee should look at, how the workflow should go, anything like that, because the last thing I want is to actually feel like we're set up, and dig into that work, and then have, like, prominent voices in the community being like, why are you doing it that way? You should be doing this a completely different way. Like, I want this to be like a measure twice, cut once type thing, where we, we figure out, like, uh, like the, like the structure of this and the scope of this right the first time, and then go forward with it. So, if you have any thoughts about this, show up at those meetings, or email, or, or whatever you want to do, but like, let's, let's get all that feedback early.
Counselor Rothschild?
Um, would potential seats be open to just experts, whether or not they're residents of East Hampton?
That's the sort of stuff that we're gonna have to discuss. Yeah, I don't really know yet. I, I purposely left this language fairly vague, so that we can have a pretty open conversation about this in committee.
Because I think that would be valuable.
And, and I think the charter specifically states that really the only person who is specifically named in the charter is the city attorney, will have oversight, clearly, because if we're gonna change a law, we're gonna have to have it vetted by somebody, so, um, so our city attorney will have a, a big role in all of this, but otherwise, exactly what Counselor Peak said, we're gonna have to decide that in Rules and Government Relations. Counselor Gomez?
Thank you, Madam President. From the Latino community, from the Black and Brown community, I just want to say thank you to Counselor Peak. I think this is a great idea, I think, uh, we should do this more often with all our ordinances and rules, and see if we discriminate against anyone. Uh, we shouldn't discriminate against anyone because the color of the skin, or because any other reason, and, and again, uh, thank you, and I'm, I'm more than happy to help with anything I can.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Uh, Counselor Rist, do you have more comments?
Just that I looked at the charter, the makeup of the committee is not mentioned in the charter, so I think we're wide open as to how many members and who they are.
Correct. Okay. Barbara, go ahead.
Owen Zerrit?
Aye.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Gazinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
All right, motion passes, thank you.
And thus concludes.
We have another meeting coming up for Rules and Government Relations, you may have already said that, Counselor Peak.
Well, so, yeah, we, we had, uh, something worked out, and now there's that conversation about a graduation, which may conflict with that, so, I'm sort of, I know that there's been some emails back and forth about all of that, I'm kind of waiting to see how all that shakes out, and then, um, unfortunately, I, like, there, there might be a meeting next week, or there might not, and I wish I could give you more information than that.
Okay. Counselor Zerrit?
Counselor Peak, do you intend to take up the discussion of the ordinance review committee at your next meeting, or do you think, are you gonna get more off your plate first?
No, I, I think that it'll be at least one more, because we're gonna have to do charter review, and there's a few things that have been sitting on the agenda for a while that deserve at least a discussion of how we're gonna handle them, uh, so, whatever happens next week, we won't be discussing this at that point.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Peak. Is that it?
Yes, thus concludes.
Do you have anything you want to speak to regarding the rank choice voting committee?
We met, um, last month, we actually met with our vendor, who was able to clarify some of our questions, so I think we have everything we need to get together, and, um, I'm, I'm hoping to actually meet with one other member of the committee, and potentially, uh, some other people to, uh, actually get a first draft of the ordinance for us to review for our next meeting, um, so that's where we are with that. It's, it's been steady, good progress.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Counselor Gomez, did you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, President Coniff. I just have a question for Chairman Peak. Is anything from, uh, from the city about the emails from the city committee chairs? For the emails?
Uh, I, I'm sorry, is there any, anything about?
Is the request to easthampton.gov?
Oh, yeah, we, we haven't taken it up yet, that's something that I, I, that's actually, I'm hoping to get to that at our next meeting, if we can wrap up the charter stuff early enough.
Thank you.
Okay, and the last thing on the agenda is the Senior Tax Work Off Committee, we are continuing to meet, we are continuing to do research, uh, my dogs are telling you the same, um, we're continuing to do research on the Senior Tax Work Off, uh, we have another meeting, I believe, next week, we're meeting roughly monthly, um, and we hope to have something to present to the mayor in the December, maybe January timeframe, but we'll, once we have it a little bit more formed, we'll be able to bring something back to the, uh, council for us to just understand what we're working on, so more to come on that, but we are continuing to work on it. And I believe we have finished the agenda, I will take a, a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Second.
Motion is second, Barbara?
Uh, Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Gazinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerrit?
Yes.
Great, we are adjourned, thank you all very much, have a wonderful evening, and we'll see you in a couple weeks.